Welcome to the North Idaho College December 17th, 2018 Board of Trustees Meeting. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice.
Thank you. Could I ask trustee Banducci to read our mission statement?
Absolutely. Although I confess my glasses are sitting in my car, so here we go. I know, you think I'd remember them. North Idaho meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence -- excellence, excuse me, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. We have a verication of a quorum, and have you all had an opportunity to review the minutes? If there are no changes, I would accept the minutes as written. Hearing none, we'll accept those. No one has signed up for public comment, so that takes us right to celebrating success. Our Adult Education Center, Lori Briggs and Laura Umpton, welcome.
Chair Wood, members of the board, colleagues, guests, thank you for the invitation to introduce Laura Umpton, who many of you know is a consummate educator at NIC. Laura leads a team that, on a daily basis, fulfills the NIC mission through their commitment to high standards, their compassion for students, and their stewardship of program resources. Laura's vision for the Adult Education Center is shown by her collaboration with people from across the campus and around the community. Just last week, for example, Laura and Bucky McKenzie from AEC received a foundation grant to provide to students the Strong Interest Inventory, which is a widely-used instrument for students to help determine their career and future interests. You know, this is but one example of how AEC makes a huge difference in the community. And so Laura will introduce Caleb, and he will tell a bit of his story about AEC's impact on him and on the wider community. Laura Umpton.
Trustee Wood and the rest of the trustees, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. The Adult Education Center is a program that's federally funded under the U.S. Department of Education Title II Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. This is a Congress Act passed in 2014 designed to help job seekers access employment, education training and support services, and to succeed in the Labor Department. The state of Idaho is the administrator by the Division of Professional Technical Education. The program assists students with literacy, math, English language skills necessary for continued education, educational attainment. There's the wrong slide up, so...
That's all right, Laura. We'll follow along with you.
Sorry about that. Trying to get used to back and forth here. Educational attainment, employment, and economic self-sufficiency. The program is carried out in the state of Idaho regionally via the state's technical and community colleges, universities, and the State Department of Corrections. Each local provider has the responsibility for offering adult education instruction either through direct instruction or distance learning modules. Region One Adult Education consists of the five northern counties. We're going to get this, I know. The five northern counties, which includes Boundary, Bonner, Cootney, Shoshone, and Benowa. Adult Education has four outreach centers located at the NIC Bonners Ferry, Sandpoint, Coeur d'Alene, and Silver Valley Extension campuses. Each center conducts intake and assessment, assures appropriate class placement, provides goal-setting and education planning guidance, and follows up with students outside the classroom to ensure attendance and to also guide program progress. This staff consists of a full-time director, program coordinator, and student advisor. There's six part-time instructors, three part-time administrative assistants, and one part-time GED test proctor. We serve anyone that is eligible for our program, which consists of the following requirements: they have to be 16 years or older, not currently enrolled in any public high school, have skills below the 12th grade high school graduate level in reading, writing, or math. The student population consists primarily of GED completion students, college remediation students, and adult basic skill students. Adult education students receive free instruction, continuous enrollment opportunities, instructor-led day-and-night classes, and the class sizes are very small, averaging 10 to 12 students, and all of the textbooks and learning materials are provided. The Adult Education Center had 415 students enrolled in the five northern counties in FY18. 239 graduates received their degree, their GED -- excuse me, GED credential in May of 2018, and several of the trustees were there at the ceremony. Thank you for attending every year, I appreciate that. And President McLennan gave an address that was still talked about, I think, among our students, very impressive and inspirational. The NIC GED enrollment, so right now, the statistics that I was able to compile or find is that there's currently 447 GED graduates attending NIC, not currently, excuse me, in FY16-17. So that was the most recent figure that I was able to secure. The Adult Education enrollment has continued to increase in the last two years. In FY17, we saw a 13% enrollment increase to 373 students. In FY18, 11% enrollment increase to 415 students. The breakdown is as follows: Bonners Ferry has 29 students in the last year, Coeur d'Alene 324, Sandpoint 32, Silver Valley 30, for an overall total of 415. The Adult Education Center student demographics consist of females 218, males 197. The age groups are broken down for your reference. Age 16 to 18, we have 133 enrolled, which is about 32%. Ages 19 to 24, 124 enrolled, or 30%. Ages 25 to 44, 128, or 31%, and ages 45-plus, 30, or 7%. We have seen the age of our adult education student increase over the last several years. The population used to be much younger, but as you can see, there's not a lot of difference between the three age groups from 16 to 44. The adult -- oh, excuse me. The Adult Education student continued more with demographics that might be of interest to you. In FY18, 18% of our AE students had a high school diploma or some post-secondary education. 57 NIC students attended our program for a total of 2,442 instructional hours. 415 adult education students attended for a total of 26,000 -- I have to really read this again, 26,774 instructional hours. We have seen that the average contact per student is 125. That has increased dramatically over the last couple of years. The students are coming in at a lower level, and they're staying longer to complete their studies. 85% of our students enrolled at the center achieved a measurable level gain. It's often referred to in our world as an NRS level, and it is a gain that is given on our Test of Adult Basic Education. They're assessed when they enter the program, and then they're assessed every 60 hours to see what their achievement or their gain has been. That is reported in all of our financial reports to the state and federal governments. We couldn't do what we do without the internal partnerships and department and divisions at the college. I've just listed a few of these here, but we have so much support. NIC advising has been amazing. This last year, advisor met one-on-one with many of our students to help them navigate the college entrance requirements because they are unsure of how to do that. They don't come from homes, and they don't have role models that have gone to college, so often this is a very complex and tough road for them to travel. The college and career service staff here has given presentations on career options and has navigated, helped them navigate, the Idaho Career Information Systems. The Cardinal Learning Commons and the Math Division collaborate with us regularly on how to identify and appropriately place remedial math college students for co-enrollment. The NIC Marketing and Communications Department helps us with all of our marketing, social media, student testimonials. The NIC Foundation has been instrumental in providing scholarships to our Students of the Year, and we have one of those students that will speak here in a few minutes who received a scholarship and has encouraged our GED grads to apply for foundation scholarships. The NIC IT Department helps us all the time. We call, and they're there within minutes when we have problems. The NIC administrative leadership at the college has been phenomenal in terms of supporting us and supplying us with everything that we need. Our external partnerships are very wide. I listed a few of the ones here. Time doesn't allow me to go into all of our partnerships, but part of the federal mandate for our program is that we collaborate with our community partners, and we have very close relationships with many of the ones that you see up on the screen. The first one, Trio, has been a very large contributor to helping our students be able to pay for their GED tests and to give them guidance and advising as far as continuing their education at North Idaho College. We could go down and talk about each one of these: the Idaho Department of Labor, the Idaho Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, the Idaho Commission for the Blind, Headstart, Hallelujah Health, Union Gospel Mission, Panhandle Health District. They all refer students to them, to us, and we to them. We work together as partners to provide the best information that we can to the students that we serve. At this time, I would like to just briefly introduce Caleb Rittenhour. He is a May 2016 GED outstanding graduate. He has also graduated from North Idaho College in the Small Engine and Power Sports Repairs Program, and he is currently employed locally at Lawrence's Motorcycle and Repair.
It's a good place to have you. Harley works out.
Welcome, Caleb.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Laura, and I want to thank all you trustees for giving me this opportunity to be here and talk to you. As I was thinking about what I would share, it's amazing to think how this program has really changed my life in a lot of ways. Growing up, I was homeschooled, and my plan was to just go on and get my GED and get a low-end job and just enough to make money to get by and go from there. I didn't really have a plan to go on to college or anything beyond that. So when I came to the GED program, it was just get my GED and move on. But when I came in, the experience really changed my thinking about what I wanted to do with my education, how I wanted to move forward with that. I remember walking in the first day, and I know Laura will remind me of this. I came into her class, which was an English class, and we were doing, writing essays. And I walked in that day, I had never written an essay in my homeschool experience, and I walked in, I sat there, I looked at the paper, I started with a blank piece of paper, and I ended with a blank piece of paper. And by the time I finished the GED, the Adult Education Program for the GED, I wrote three or four essays. And I go back and read those, and I said, "I really wrote those? It really surprises me how far the GED program brought me." And through the experience, toward the end of the program, Laura asked me, "Are you planning to go on to college?" I said, "No, I'm not planning to do that." She said, "Well, consider it because you have been selected for Student of the Year, and that comes with a scholarship." So I started to think, "Okay, maybe I should go on to college." And through the influence of Laura and also the other teachers there at the center, I decided to move on to college, graduated from North Idaho College, and got a job here locally. And along with that, I think about the whole experience and how many opportunities it has given me in a bigger world than even just NIC. Even just coming here, this opportunity to speaking to you guys, I would have never had that opportunity if I had not decided to move on with my education. And so many other opportunities with my job, another opportunity, I had to go and do another training school in Texas. Because of the training I got in college and the job I got, I had the time to take off so I could go down and do that training. And I get excited about it because when I look at the whole picture, so much has happened, and it all started with the Adult Education Center here at NIC. And I really appreciate the different opportunities, the different people I've met, the president here, and also a few others that I've met through NIC. And it's been really a big opportunity, a big blessing, and I thank you again for this opportunity to talk to you guys.
Thank you, Caleb. Do you have any questions, board? We might have a question for you, Caleb.
Just one comment. You know, my bike comes in this spring for some service, maybe you'll be the young man working on it for me.
Probably, yeah. I probably will be.
And I would just like to...
I hardly need some love, so...
Before you run off, do you have a question? Please.
I have one of Caleb and also of Laura. But Caleb, how did you, what stimulated you to even look into getting your GED? I mean, did you, did somebody talk to you about it, or did you...
I knew it was the next step to move on to getting a job, basically. My oldest brothers had done that as their high school diploma. Since we grew up homeschooled, it was the idea, go and get your GED as your high school diploma and then move from there. So it was basically the next step to get a job, was basically it.
Well, I want to tell you that you obviously have a lot of skills and abilities. Just coming here and making the presentation today was something that a lot of people get very nervous about and would have a difficult time doing, and you did it very adroitly, and you did it very well, and you should make sure and continue your education. You're doing very well.
Thank you very much.
Laura, I had a question of you, and that was kind of following up when I was asking Caleb, and that's, how do you get people into this program? I mean, I noticed that there's a wide range of partnerships and that sort of thing. You probably get some feed from some of those areas of the Union Gospel Mission and Panhandle Health and some of these other ones, but is there any sourcing that you look to to get people into the program?
We, a lot of our students come as a referral basis from those community partners. We also, the college is also very good. The advisors are very adept at referring students over if they feel that they would benefit from our services. And I think for, our largest referral base comes from our students, students that have gone through the program. That's by far and away our largest referral base. They tell their friends, and the friends, when they mark, we have, when they come into the program, we have a card that they fill out upon entry, and we ask them, you know, where did they hear about the program? And most of the time, it's from a former student, someone that's been through the program before.
Certainly. I was impressed, we see decline in enrollment as a result of just general conditions, and I was impressed with your increasing enrollment. And do you have anything that you can attribute that to? Do you know?
Yes. Our increased enrollment primarily has been coming from college remediation students. We can attribute part of those numbers to students that are entering North Idaho College that are not quite prepared to take college credit-bearing courses. And so when they're referred to us by an advisor, we administer the TAVE, the Test of Adult Basic Education. And right now, the majority of them that are referred to us in that instance are not quite ready to do college work yet. They're underprepared, and they are high school graduates, but they are not, their skill level, particularly in math, but also in writing and language, are below a 12th grade level.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the jobs that you do.
Thank you very much. I do have just a few closing remarks.
I wanted to make a comment to Caleb before he sits down. Caleb, your story is exactly why we're all here, and it was such a great story of success. And we've all experienced what education does in your life, so we can all identify. And I hope you go on and tell your story to other students, regardless if they come here, hopefully here, but education changes everything. So, good for you.
And I have to say something I forgot to mention. We can look at numbers all day long, but when we see evidence right in front of us, that's when it makes a difference, and here I am.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just in the way of closing, I just have a few more slides, some information I'd like to share. The economic impact of adults without a high school diploma is quite substantial. They are more likely, more than twice as likely, to live in poverty. The cost of low literacy is estimated to be in the billions due to loss of tax revenue. And according to one source, the rate of low literacy in the United States directly costs the healthcare industry more than $70 million every year. Patients with low literacy skills have a 50% increased risk of hospitalization. The funding for our program, I think, is important to talk about. I often get asked this question, and we did have in fiscal year 18 a congressional coalition, basically, that authorized $617 million to be split by the states for adult education under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. The federal funds reached $1.8 million roughly of the 36 million adults who need basic skills instruction. And it's important to note that because there has been times when the federal funding has been threatened to be decreased in a time when we seem to need to have it increased. $1 invested in adult education equates to about a $60 decrease in welfare costs, tax revenue, and economic activity. Improved literacy increases the national income level and decreases healthcare costs. The GED Testing Service website says that 100 hours or more of adult education attendance equates to about almost roughly $9,600 in extra earnings per year. The community need is great. Adult education is meeting that need, and the services that we use to help support our students who face many, many challenges. Our students have learning disabilities, food insecurity, lack of transportation, lack of family support, and lack of childcare. We are at the center constantly referring to outside resources to help those students continue to attend and face those challenges. A key component of NIC's mission statement, which trustee Banducci read so well, says that North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of the students in the five northern counties. The NIC students have a wide range of goals that education helps them meet. The adult education students have those goals, but they also have a lot of needs and abilities that require some extra support. Not every student who desires and needs education to meet their goals is quite ready for college, and that's part of what we do at the center. I think in closing, I'd just like to say that because of North Idaho College's cooperation, partnerships, and all the services that you provide, we're able to help these students stay in school. Our goal is to help them transition successfully to post-education or training, and I think we're doing a really great job of that. Many of their stories are very heart-touching. I get kind of emotionally involved when I think about some of what our students have to face, day in and day out, that I've never had to experience in my life. So thank you very much for all your continued support and your good wishes.
Thank you, Laura. Board, any further questions for Laura? That was a very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up was our ASNIC representative, Peter Soddenberg.
Madam Chair, trustees, Dr. McLennan, and guests, always an honor to speak to you. I'm excited because it's the end of the semester, so us students are out, which is fantastic. We're always thankful for that. We, the month was short, which was good, though. We had finals crammed in there, so it was a stressful, short month. We were able, ASNIC was one of the things that we were able to do this month, was we were able to get puppies and bring them to the sub to de-stress the students, which is pretty successful because puppies are great. So that was received well. Students always love, I don't know how much it helped for the finals, but it helped them de-stress. So that was something we did on Wednesday, as kind of a good luck on your final and just a fun thing to do. So the other thing that happened this month was we had St. ASNIC. St. ASNIC, as I mentioned earlier, is where we try to help other students give gifts to their children. That was super successful. We had about 40 students, 40 children that we were able to give gifts to. It was a great, great way for them. We also were able to tell them about our resources, such as the food pantry and stuff like that. So really, just a great opportunity to serve our fellow students. And then, really, that sums up in a way what we've been up to this month. The biggest news, though, that happened this month is our Director of Life and Leadership is going to be leaving us to go to move on with her career at Cootney Health. She, Heather Erickson, she was such an amazing person in ASNIC, and I can't stress how big of a loss it will be to ASNIC. She changed, she was here for 13 years and changed so many lives of students, even with me. I've been with her for a year and a half, and she's helped me figure out what my values truly are and talked about how I can grow as a person and lead. So she's going to be a huge loss to NIC, to incoming students, but she was just an amazing person. I want to give her, just say how appreciative she was. And I'm excited to work with Graydon more in the upcoming semesters. She'll be filling in some of the places that Heather left off. But anyways, that sums up really what this short month was up to.
Very nice. Board, any questions of Peter? Well, I would share your sentiment about Heather. I was on the board when Heather was ASNIC president, and then came back and we hired her, and she's just a wonderful person, and Cootney Health is lucky to have her. Maybe you want to follow in her footsteps.
Maybe.
After you graduate, come back to NIC.
We'll see.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday.
Thanks.
Staff Assembly, Kathy Sparks.
Good evening, trustees and President McLennan. So at our last staff assembly meeting, which was last week, we had quite a bit of conversation about our constitution. So we're working, we had the first reading, and we're working on revising our constitution for staff assembly, so we spent a lot of time on that. We also discussed the 360 evaluation and our survey. And just an update for you, Joe, myself, and Diana have been working on analyzing some of the data from that survey, and hopefully we'll have a report out by the end of this week as our goal. Staff Assembly also had a presentation from Teresa Borren Paul. She provided us an update on the enrollment services and what's happening over in Lee Kildale Hall. And the one-stop shop, she said, would probably be open in March. And that's pretty much all we've done. I want to tell you all Merry Christmas. I hope you all have a Happy New Year, too.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions for Kathy? We'll enjoy your holiday as well. Thank you. Faculty Assembly, Joe Jacoby.
He'll take the table with you.
Thank you, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues, guests. Thanks for this opportunity to share what we're doing here with faculty assembly. We met last week. We got started late due to some technology problems, but so that our distance people could be on board. But then we got started hearing about the... But then we got started hearing about the Cardinal Read from Brian Sequin and updates on the library, which they're so active. If you've been in the library recently, it's highly populated by students and they've got a lot of activities that have been going on, as well as activities with the Common Read that have kept it a very busy place. We also heard about an upcoming diversity event that'll happen in April, but we're looking to use that as a way to enhance education in the classrooms. So looking at some of the events and themes, we heard, we got to see some of the schedule for that so, so we can include it on syllabi in the spring. And then because of some questions about the three sixty degree evaluation discussion, Chris Martin very politely and graciously extended his time and came and spoke to us and answered questions. And Lita shared some information as well, so I think that we're getting a little more communication out to, to the faculty. And that is that.
All right. Everybody seems to be ready for the holiday break.
Yeah, well, my brain is kind of fried from Kathy and Diana, and I've spent some long hours with the survey thing, so it's kind of flatlining a little bit right now. But we wish you a happy holidays as well, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe?
It sounds like it's time for a break, Joe.
Yes.
Well, everybody helps support us a lot, too.
Have a great holiday.
And finally, Jessica Adams, Senate.
Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues, and guests. College Senate typically meets, would be meeting this Thursday. However, faculty members, I'm not quite sure why they didn't want to show up after their contract ended. So we met last Wednesday, and at our meeting, we continued our in-depth discussion on the new policy and procedure regarding student complaints. We haven't quite passed a first reading that yet, but we've been having great discussion. We're making good headway. We also passed an advisory vote to support the president in a presentation of naming the NICE facility, even though it's not gonna be called the NICE facility. But we were not provided the donor names. However, I'm excited to hear who the donors are today. But we did pass and support in following NIC history on naming buildings after large donations and really making sure that people are appreciated because we do appreciate those, so. And our next meeting will be on Thursday, January seventeen. That is my report. Any questions?
Thank you. Board, questions? Good report. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You, too. Takes us to the President's Report. Dr. McLennan.
I just have a brief report this evening. Tomorrow, I'll be leaving early for Boise for the State Board of Education meeting. And during that time, I have a number of collateral meetings. One will be with the Higher Education Presidents Council. That's the eight presidents of the public institutions in Idaho. I don't usually get to attend that meeting, but the timing worked out that I'll actually be there. Also, the four community college presidents. After we traveled to Boise a few months ago, we, and met with Wendy Seacrest of the Idaho Workforce Development Council. We suggested, and she thought it was a good idea, along with her chair, Trent Clark, that we do some more communication around strategy with each other. So the four community colleges presidents and Wendy Seacrest and Trent Clark will be meeting Wednesday morning to begin that process. And then also be meeting with the Legislative Services Office staff to discuss the ever swirling and changing process that JFAC will be this year. We still don't quite know where the dust is gonna settle on that. And probably won't know when I get back, but we're gonna talk about all scenarios. I want to thank everybody, Board and college community, for bringing the fall two thousand eighteen semester in for a successful landing. There's always a lot going on, and they take twists and turns along the way, and this semester was no exception to that. But I'm grateful for the work that our college community provides, a service to our students and community. Just as an example, I had the opportunity to attend the ADN Associate Degree in Nursing pinning ceremony last Thursday, and that's always a, just a really nice event and very intimate and personal, like the way we do many of our student recognitions at North Idaho College. I also want to announce, although I think some of you may already know, but it hasn't been announced publicly, that the college has received notification of a grant award, two grant awards, actually. The first is just, just under six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's from the Economic Development Administration, and it will support the work we're doing around entrepreneurship and innovation in the Headland Building, allowing us to create a rapid prototype, a prototype of a rapid prototype center to help people actually design product. The second grant was through the, we were notified by the American Association of Community Colleges that we received a grant through the foundation developed by the band Metallica for a hundred thousand, and it's funny, it's a great grant and, you know, when you throw Metallica into the mix of, of an announcement, it gets a lot of attention. But that one's gonna provide scholarship resources, primarily scholarship resources, to non-traditional students in our career and technical, some of our selected career and technical programs. So we're excited to get both those projects underway. And lastly, after this meeting, beginning at five thirty this evening, we have our legislative send-off for the North Idaho Legislative Delegation. And I hope the Board will be able to join us for that. And then thank you, and I wish you all happy holidays as well.
Thank you. Any questions for President McLennan? Well, just a comment, those grants are very exciting. That, that's a lot of money and can do a lot for the campus.
One more comment on that. I, you know, this environment of raising external resources is a very competitive one. Since the, at the federal level, it's gotten, just, it's gotten a lot tighter. The, and we've received feedback on both of these grants that as the scores were evaluating our grant applications, ours clearly rose to the top in the quality, the documentation, the, the, just the production of the grant request itself. And, you know, I don't know where Rail is, if she's back there. I think I see her over there. And Hannah Patton in her office and others who work with them on this grants have just been knocking it out of the park and appreciate the work that they're doing.
Certainly. Thank you. And Dr. McLennan, you're up on your old business. Tab one, second reading, our action item, Emeritus Status Policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board was provided this information as, at the last Board meeting. The requested action today is that the Board consider a motion adopting the Emeritus Status Policy for former Board of Trustee members.
Thank you. And we've been through the policy last month, Board, and I believe trustee Howard made some recommendations and those were taken into account. Is that correct?
No.
Minor wording changes.
Yeah, okay. Board, do I have a motion to adopt this policy?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Trustee Banducci.
I have to confess, I have some mixed, mixed feelings about it, honestly. And I'm gonna have a hard time probably voicing those concerns very articulately, but not knowing exactly what that's gonna look like after it's been implemented, how it's gonna, how it's gonna be applied and how the process and who's gonna be nominated, I just, I don't know, I just have some misgivings and concerns about it, and I guess that's the best way I can say it, so. I'll leave it at that, but I, I, I'm not gonna vote for it. I may just abstain.
Well, that's certainly your privilege.
I'm just, I see some real potential positives to it, but I also see some, some, some potential negatives and without elaborating too much, so. Just wanted to explain myself that I do have some, a few misgivings. Not knowing exactly how it's gonna play out.
Thank you. Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you abstain?
I'll abstain.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry, I have to get back to my agenda. Technology. Ken, what's up next on the agenda? Thank you. That takes us to new business tab two, information, action item, naming for North Idaho College Collaborative Education Building. Dr. McLennan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The subject, facility naming. The background, North Idaho College Policy six point zero six allows for college facilities to be named at the discretion of the institution. Policy Procedure six point oh six outlines naming of a facility include an advisory vote by the North Idaho College Senate, input from the college president, president's cabinet, and the Board of Trustees, with final approval being made by the Board of Trustees. The procedure further outlines criteria for naming facilities in honor of an individual, family, group, or organization shall include, but not be limited to, and there are three criteria, extraordinary service to the college as a member of the faculty or staff, or as a volunteer. Two, significant financial contributions to the construction or renovation of a facility or to some program or project which is part of the mission of the college. Three, facilities, three facilities shall not be named for current employees of the college and may only be named for former employees who have left the employment for a minimum of five years or who are deceased. That does not apply in this particular case. And I'm just gonna read the narrative that I've produced to actually present this naming action item. Former Coeur d'Alene area residents, Bob and Leona DiArmond, have recently made the largest private contribution to North Idaho College in the college's eighty-five-year history. Their commitment is a tribute to the people of North Idaho where the DiArmonds lived for nearly thirty years. Originally from Oregon, Bob and Leona DiArmond moved to Coeur d'Alene in nineteen fifty-nine. While in Coeur d'Alene, Bob and his brother owned the DiArmond Stud Mill, which merged with several other companies to form Idaho Forest Industries that later sold to Stimson Lumber Company. The DiArmond Stud Mill was located on what is now the northern portion of the North Idaho College Coeur d'Alene campus and is part of the higher education corridor. Bob retired as a lumber products company executive and entrepreneur with several successful business ventures. He and Leona made it a priority to invest in education. In the past several years, Bob and Leona have made significant investments in NIC, which will support college programming and student scholarships in perpetuity. To honor their wishes, the amount of their generous donation through the North Idaho College Foundation will remain confidential. It is my honor to recommend the North Idaho, to, it is my honor to recommend the North Idaho College Board of Trustees formally name the Collaborative Use Building currently under construction on River Avenue, the Bob and Leona DiArmond Building.
Wonderful. All right. Board, we have the information, and this is an action item. Do I have a motion to proceed on the naming of the North Idaho College Collaborative Education Building?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Well, I would like to say something if no one else is. I, this is, for me personally, this is full circle. The DiArmond Mill was here in the eighties when I was a student and I worked there as a security officer. Yeah, and so whenever I'm on that site and to see what's happened, only, I'm not gonna say how much later, a while later. It's amazing what, what has been done, and the mill, you know, unfortunately moved on, but something great came out of it. And for the DiArmonds to step up and, and come back to us in that way and, and name, we get the opportunity to name the building with their generous donation. I am just thrilled about it, and I, I don't know if we'll get the opportunity to meet them in person and thank them in person. I sure hope so. But thank you for your hard work on this and the foundation, and I think it's a fabulous, fabulous thing.
Thank you. I, I do need to clarify one other aspect of this. We are also working through the partners who will be in this building with us to develop the secondary descriptive portion of the name. Whether it's North Idaho Collaborative Education Building, College and University Center, we just weren't prepared to bring that descriptive naming to the Board at this point, but that will be coming back to you as well for the next portion of this. I just want to make sure that our partners knew that, if they're listening to this in some way, that we're still having that conversation.
Great. All right. Well, Board, we'll move forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I thank you for all your hard work, and I, and again, I hope we get a chance to thank them in person. That takes us on to an information item. We're just going to get an update on this wonderful facility. Chris Martin.
Just a couple of pictures to share. Chair Wood, members of the Board, it's my, my pleasure this evening just to bring a brief update on the North Idaho College Collaborative Education Facility. Couple of pictures just from this last construction progress meeting. If you drove by this evening, hopefully you saw lots of progress from the last time that, that we visited about this facility. Just a small schedule update. We did a revision on the schedule and offered an extension of sixty-two days on this project. So overall, we are still right where we thought we would, would be with making sure that we're open by June. But our substantial completion date has moved by sixty-two days. Otherwise, we're on schedule overall. The center stairwell is what's taken longer than expected. But the rest of the building is working around this setback, and we still have substantial completion scheduled now for April twenty-ninth. The roof is being loaded now, and installation will be completed on Friday, fingers crossed, on Friday. The next piece of this is the brick veneer firm will be setting up the scaffolding system over the course of the next week. On our first floor, as you kind of look through here, that's the center stairwell that's providing a little bit of a challenge to us currently. But MEP on the first floor is, is done. Very few people will be excited about these pictures, but to show that MEP is, is done. And sprinkler system is the last piece of there. We're finishing that up by December twenty-eighth. Overall, the project is staying well within budget. There have been very few change orders on this project, and hopefully that will continue to be the case, but it's been a successful project. And the parking lot piece that is adjacent to this, if you looked closely, does not have asphalt on it, and we are past the time to, to add asphalt in North Idaho. So that'll be completed and fully open by the same time the project is finished. Happy to stand for questions.
Board, questions from Chris Martin on the update. Well, Chris, first of all, great job on, on time and within budget. You can't ask for much more than that, and you've done a very nice job on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Wood.
Oh, yes, trustee Banducci.
Chris, on the, on the parking lot with the asphalt, was that kind of a could-go-either-way sort of thing? You weren't sure if you'd be able to get to it or not, so that has no real implications to the schedule or the cost or anything, does it?
It, it has no implications. What, what has changed there is we originally planned on using the parking lot that's adjacent to the wastewater treatment center on Hubbard as the laydown area. And it became more advantageous to use the, the parking lot project that's right adjacent to the building as the laydown area and not risk damaging the asphalt. So we just waited, used that as the laydown area, and it made it easier for our students to not have to worry about that lot and snow removal on that lot. So we have a, a whole lot dedicated for students as opposed to a partial lot. So overall, best thing, I believe, for the students as well in that change.
Sounds like a wise decision. You bet. What, are you? Can I pry out of you any discussion on the challenges with the stairwell, or would you prefer not to discuss that further?
Madam Chair, trustee Banducci, the stairwells and how they're being poured, they're being poured on site, and there is some stamping that's being done around that to give it the look that we're, we're working on. And there's been, there's been problems with that center stairwell and the, and the concrete work, but it has the look and feel that, that we're hoping to have. So there's been some redos on that stairwell to ensure that it has the look and feel that we're, we're hoping for.
Has that created a cost issue, or is that something that the contractor has absorbed?
Madam Chair and trustee Banducci, that is, that is a, a cost that the contractor is absorbing on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, Madam Chair, I just want to also highlight Gary Stark and his team. He's the contact for DPW on this project, and he's the one that's leading the charge and has done a great job managing that on our behalf.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's a short meeting tonight. Well, it's a short meeting tonight. We're already to the Board Chair Report, and I really don't have anything except to, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, wish you all a very Merry Christmas. We'll see you back here in January. Before you know it, are there any remarks for the good of the order? All right. With that, I will adjourn. That's a record, for sure.